She got the gold award.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Mardi Gras edition of your Laguna Niguel City Council meeting. Tomorrow is Ash Wednesday, but today is Fat Tuesday, so I guess that means we're supposed to have fun tonight. So, should be rather quick. But, we have our meetings on the first Tuesday, today's Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Our regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday, there it is, of every month, in the City Council chambers, right here in City Hall. So, City Clerk Gomez, if you would, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rains?
Present.
Councilmember Genaway?
Present.
Councilmember Minigar?
Present.
Mayor Protem Davies? And Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to ask Monsignor John Yurel, from St. Timothy Catholic Church, here in Laguna Niguel, to come forward for the invocation. And after that, we're gonna have Brownie Chu, 5477, come forward to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
... Earth is the Lord's, and all it holds, the world and those who live there. God founded it upon the seas and the... Go up to the mountain of the Lord's. Put it to idols, who have not sworn falsely. They will receive blessings from the Lord, and justice from their saving. Welcome, Lord. Ask you, loving God, to bless the work of our city council, watch over our community to protect us. Part us all in time and trial. Opportunities to serve our citizens. Hey, ho, and the young men.
And, thank you, Monsignor.
Audience attention. Audience attention, color guard advance. Color guard, present the colors. Would the Honorable Mayor, City Council members and attendant audience, please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience, may be seated.
If you girls will stay right where you are, we'll come down and say hello, and take a picture with you. That might have been one of the cutest flag salutes ever, right? So, that was pretty awesome. So, good job, girls! We're so excited to have you here. Was that fun? Awesome. You did a really good job. I wanted to let you say hi to everybody here, so I was gonna give you the microphone, and you could tell us your name, and where you go to school, and what grade you're in. Okay? Alright. I'll start out. My name's John. I'm not in a grade anymore, and I wish I could still go to school.
My name is Juliette, and I go to St. Edward, and I'm in second grade.
My name is Hayden, and I go to St. Edward, and I'm in second grade.
My name is Alexis, and I go to St. Edward, and I'm in second grade.
Now, do you have any leaders here with us tonight? Okay, uh, come on up. I won't make you say what grade you're in. It's okay. Thanks for coming up so much. Wish we'll make sure that we get a picture. And, to say thank you for all your service and your commitment to the girls, want to give you our 30th Anniversary Challenge Coin, and say thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Would you guys mind if we take a picture? Okay, good. Let's get in. Now, who's gonna dismiss us tonight? You are? Okay, do you want the microphone too?
Um, color guard dismissed.
Let's give him a big hand. Well done. You get to stay here for just another minute. Yeah. Actually, get two more. Our first presentation tonight is a resolution honoring Noor Wooz. It's the Persian New Year, coming up on March 20th, 2019. This is a resolution that we presented at the Noor Wooz Festival, and I just wanted to show it and read just a couple of things. Would you mind holding that for me a minute? Great, thank you. So, Noor Wooz is the Persian New Year, known as the first day, or is the first day of spring, and we call it Noor Wooz. It symbolizes the affirmation of life and harmony with nature, and celebrating awareness and the inseparable link between constructive labor and the natural cycles of renewal. Sounds wonderful. So, and it says, there's a lot of wonderful things on here, but basically, it says that, "Be it resolved that the city of Laguna Niguel and the City Council honors and signifies March 20th as the beginning of Noor Wooz, and encourages Laguna Niguel residents to share and enjoy the traditions, values, and beliefs that surround this holiday with their family members and friends." So, we'll be presenting that to them, but I want to make sure everybody got to see it tonight. So, thank you very much. And thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next presentation's a pretty special one. It's our Orange County Sheriff's Department Deputy of the Year Award. It's being presented to Deputy Stephen Tidwell. And at this time, I'd like to ask our Chief of Police Services, Matt Daniels, and Deputy Tidwell, if you would, come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Deputy Stephen Tidwell, if you could take a place of honor, and I'll talk about you for a sec. Deputy Tidwell's been with us since 2015. He's been a motor deputy for us. I know we like that type of enforcement in the city, so he's done a great job for us in that role. He also was our DUI and traffic deputy for a time, so, again, did tremendous job taking numerous DUI offenders off the street, getting drugs off our streets, and just did a fantastic job in that role. He's one of our most proactive deputies. He is our leading arrest getter, and for that, he's been chosen for our special enforcement team, which handles problem areas within the city, and problem people within the city. And what I mean by that is criminal offenders that are continual criminal offenders. Stephen has done a fantastic job for us, not only besides what he does out on the streets, but what he does for his partners. Always there to help, always there to teach, always there to guide, arranges outings out in public to strengthen their bond and their friendship. Fantastic leader, will be a leader in this department for years to come. Congratulations, Stephen. 2018, Laguna Niguel Deputy of the Year.
And I'm sure I speak for the entire City Council and the entire city, that we couldn't be more appreciative. Really just want to say thank you. This is a big deal. On a personal note, I was there when you were injured, when your bike went down. It happened right behind my house. Scared me to death, by the way, and we were, we stopped and had a word of prayer, and I can't believe that just a short time later, here you are, looking great and doing well. So, this is a big day. I want to give you as well, one of our 30th Anniversary Challenge Coins. We'll do that the right way, and just say thank you so much for all that you do. And Chief, you had to pick one, and I appreciate that, but the entire force just has our gratitude and appreciation, and we couldn't, we couldn't do it, and you are really what makes Laguna Niguel remarkable. So, thank you so much. Would you mind if I took a picture with you? Let's give him a big hand. Thank you very much. And that's it, we can return to the dice. And that concludes our presentation, and brings us to public comments. Before we do that, I'll say that any person wishing to address the City Council will need to complete and present a gold-color Request for Speak form. They look like this. You can give those to the City Clerk. These forms are available on the counter at the back of the room. Please be aware that the time will be limited to three minutes for each speaker. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement if you'd like, and City Clerk Gomez, other than what you have. Are there any other requests to speak for him?
No, ma'am.
Great, thank you very much. With that, then, I'll open Public Communications, and our first speaker is John Ulrich. Welcome, Mr. Ulrich.
Nice to see everyone, as usual. John Ulrich, 30412, North Hampton, here in Laguna Niguel. Been in the city forever. I'm here on behalf of our City Chamber of Commerce, with just a very brief update. Many of us, I see here, have been going to the El Niguel Country Club for our networking breakfast on Fridays, third Friday of the month. We're moving that to the third Tuesday of the month, so, gives us five more minutes of sleep on Friday. So, we'll see you on the 19th, the third Tuesday of the month, this month. Also, we have a program that we've been doing for some time, Power Partner Group, and we just created a new group, Power Partner Group, for businesses in the health and wellness industry. This is a free member benefit that will showcase different businesses. Members may host a monthly luncheon at their location. It's a great way to network for referrals in those, for those in the health and wellness industry. And of course, as always, we encourage everybody to shop locally, support our business, and keep the tax revenue here. So, I know you would like that part.
Great, thank you very much, Sean. Our next speaker will be Monty McDivitt. Monty, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Monty McDivitt, 30781, Seminole Place. I've been a resident of Laguna Niguel since 1990. I wanted to talk about Seminole Park today. I think it's a microcosm of maybe what's happening all over the city, but I'm gonna contain my comments to Seminole Park. Yesterday at 7:00 AM, we got an awakening that four trees were being chopped down. Now, these trees needed to go, I admit. They needed to go for actually a number of years. They were dead at the top, they were liquid amber, and I'm surprised it took so long actually to remove them. But, besides these four trees being gone, we've had six-plus trees, mature trees, removed over the last four years. Now, we've had drought problems, we've had infestation problems, and I'm not questioning the reason for the removal at all. But what I'm questioning is, is why we're not replacing them one-for-one within the same 12 months. I, that's something I just don't understand. It seems to me, if we're removing trees, we should have a budget to replace that tree the following fall, and that's when trees should be planted, is in the fall. And I know we're planting trees throughout the city, because I see them going in on Crown Valley. So, I'd like to consider, you guys, consider a one-for-one plan, where we remove a tree, we replace a tree, and that brings me to the upcoming budget. I know the tree situation in Laguna Niguel is a very delicate subject matter, but perhaps we can consider that, and consider what we've lost over the last four to six years in the upcoming budget. So, that's what I'm here tonight to request for you guys to consider, as we approach our budget negotiations, I guess, in the coming months.
Great, thanks very much. And we'll make a note, and I'll ask the City Manager to make sure that that ends up in the discussion for our pre-budget meetings, which are coming up. Yeah, do you have a response to that? Thank you very much. City Manager?
Certainly, Honorable Bureau. Monty is absolutely correct. That park was hit very hard, with not only some infestation, but other diseases. And over the last three years, the park has about 51 trees, and 20 have been removed from that park. They are gonna be planted, one-for-one. It is just taking us a little bit out of time, because our priorities to use our tree funds have been to removing trees throughout the city because of the public safety risk. But they will be planted, one-for-one.
Great, thank you very much. Alright, seeing no further communications, public communications are now closed. We'll move on to our consent calendar, which is items one through six. I'll note that we'll be voting on the current version of item number three, as highlighted in the red folders that are before the council tonight. Are there any items from my council colleagues that need to be pulled for comment or discussion?
I just want to abstain from item number three. Since I was not here, I was at Berkeley, so, I cannot vote on it.
Okay, very well. Anyone else pulling anything? Hearing none? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Mayor Protem Davies, seconded in a, in a race for the finish, so...
Seconded in unison.
Seconded in unison, but I'll call it on Councilwoman Genaway, noting that, that Councilman Minigar is abstaining on number three. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Moving on then, to our first discussion item, which is Finance Item Number One, and that's the Proposed Revisions to the Policies and Procedures for Purchasing Supplies, Equipment, and Services, and this one is going to be handled by Finance Director Erlinson. And if you would, please, please provide a staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. On October 16th of 2018, the City Council received and filed the Moss Adams Purchasing and Contracts Operational Audit Report. Identified in the audit report were opportunities for the city to improve and streamline existing purchasing practices and policy. Based on staff review and the recommendations included in the Moss Adams final report for the city of Laguna Niguel, staff recommends revisions to the Laguna Niguel purchasing ordinance, as shown in the proposed ordinance numbered 2019-196, that's attachment being your staff report. Recommended revisions would provide for the following: the removal of outdated language and clarification of responsibilities for all types of purchases, including goods, equipment, and a variety of service agreements; an increase in the dollar threshold for purchase orders from $1,000 to $3,000; an increase in the dollar threshold for open-market purchases of supplies and equipment, so no competitive bidding required, from the current limit of $2,500 to $3,000; the addition of informal bidding, so a verbal quote, requirement for supplies, equipment, and services costing between $3,000 and $10,000; the addition of request for proposal requirements for professional services over $10,000; the amendment of the dollar threshold for formal bidding, which would be written bids only, for supplies and equipment for purchases over $10,000; the authority of the department directors to approve purchase orders and contracts up to $10,000; and an increase in the authority of the city manager to approve purchase orders and contracts from the current limit of $25,000 to $50,000. Staff believes that these changes will streamline the purchasing process while still requiring competitive bidding and city council oversight at appropriate dollar levels. As such, staff recommends that the city council introduce and read the title to the proposed ordinance, waive the reading of the full text of the propos, sorry, proposed ordinance, which requires a majority vote, consider the proposed ordinance, and make any desired changes to it, and finally, direct that the proposed ordinance numbered 2019-196, with any changes to it, be placed on the agenda for the March 19th... on the agenda for the March 19th, 2019, city council meeting, and adopt the ordinance at that meeting. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for that report. Are there questions from the dice? Council members? Councilman Minigar?
Just one quick question. You're going to be diving into the E system, E signature system. For example, at any given time, once we implement this new program or these new thresholds, then at any given time, the city manager can look into a department head's status on a PO or procurement with E signature to verify number one and number two, basically to authorize to proceed?
That's correct. All of that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Great, and I just wanted to thank staff. This has been a long process. It's very interesting. The system that was in place, I think, was antiquated, to say the least. I appreciated the Moss Adams comments, and this will, I think, be a very large step forward in streamlining the efficiencies, and that'll mean fewer things have to come back to the council because they've been falling within very low thresholds, and now they won't have that problem, but we still have oversight on everything. So, this is the right way to do that, and it actually brings us in parity with some of our neighboring cities who already have these thresholds in place and the other processes. So, I want to say thank you to that. There's a few things that we have to do here. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Aye, second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Davies and a second from Councilmember Minigar. I'll introduce and read the title to the proposed ordinance, which is the ordinance of the City Council for the city of Laguna Negal, California, amending Division Six of Title Three of the Laguna Negal Municipal Code regarding the procedures and requirements for purchasing supplies, equipment and services. I assume that the motion included the waiving of the reading of the full text of the proposed ordinance, and that we consider the proposed ordinance. We've done that. I did not hear any changes to that ordinance, and that your motion would include placing this ordinance number 2019-196 with any changes on it on the agenda for the March 19th. Is that correct in your motion?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any staying, opposed? Passes unanimously. So, thank you very much. We will move to our next discussion item, which is city manager item number one, and that is the Fourth Amendment to the Orange County Fire Authority Joint Powers Authority Agreement, and this will be handled by City Manager Rich. Please provide a staff report, if you would.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and council members, the Orange County Fire Authority has made a commitment to pay down their unfunded pension liability, and as such, they proposed a fourth amendment to their agreement. That's what's before you tonight for your approval. I will tell you that the majority of all the other members have already adopted the Fourth Amendment, so it is already effective and in place. But basically, what it will allow OCFA to do is annually, any surplus funds can be used to pay down the unfunded pension liability. And we may have in the audience, I'm not sure if I see, yes, we do. We have Tricia on the back right side, and she is the OCFA treasurer. So, if there's any questions, she's more than happy to answer them. And then I also know our member to the board, Councilmember Reins. May I also want to make some comments on this item?
Thank you so much. As a member of the Board of OCFA, I just wanted to clarify a few things that the Board of Directors has made a commitment to meet our unfunded pension liabilities for the OCFA. So, as a result, this is what this amendment means, is that we will be working towards any excess monies going towards our unfunded pension liability. We already have 19 member agencies who have adopted the amendment, so it is already in full force, but OCFA is asking us to all approve and amend the Fourth Amendment. And then, the accelerated payment of the unfunded liability is a fiscally prudent action, and it will take the will to improve the funded status of our current plan. So, with that being said, I am glad to see that this is happening and that we're being proactive about meeting our pension obligations. So, I move with that, that we approve of this.
I have a question before we proceed. Maybe this is for the city manager. This is with the assumption that the city of Irvine is going to be staying under the umbrella of all the, let me get it right, 24 agencies?
Currently, Irvine is in settlement talks with OCFA, and if all goes well with that settlement agreement, they're rescinding their withdrawal from the agency, so they would be staying. But the settlement agreements, I know they're talking about them in closed session, and I don't believe they've been finally approved yet.
As you know, the city of Irvine, because of its population and because of the matrix that they use, is one of the, I guess, one of the biggest contributors into the system. So, I wanted to make sure that we minimize our risk for our city as a municipal corporation so that in the event, in the unlikely event that the city of Irvine would be leaving the system, then we, as a city, we are not going to be penalized by getting additional annual, you know, payments.
You're exactly right, Councilmember Minigar. They are one of the, I think they refer to them as a donor agency. The property tax receipts that are collected for Irvine exceeds the cost of fire protection. Laguna Negal is also a donor agency to a much lesser extent, but with our funding being a founding member of OCFA, our property tax rates will not change as a result of what happens with Irvine. But I'm very hopeful that Irvine will be staying with OCFA.
So, if I understand you correctly, it's going to be for the next year for sure. The fees, this resolution is going to be for one year.
The ongoing commitment to pay down?
No, I understand. I understand all the issues, just my question is, what we are going to be voting upon is going to be for the next year, this upcoming year. If they stay or they leave, then we can adjust accordingly.
There really won't be any adjustment made since we are a structural funded city, so it's property taxes. So, all of our residents pay property taxes that's collected by the county, and then the amount that's dedicated for fire protection goes straight to OCFA, so that will not change.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Great, thanks. We do have a motion by Councilwoman Reins. Is there a second? I have a second by Councilmember Minigar. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, passes unanimously. Just want to say thank you, by the way, to Councilwoman Reins. I know that's been a fairly long step up to get on OCFA, and there was a lot to learn, so I appreciate you digging in on that and doing a good job. Our next discussion item is city manager item number two, and that is the 30th Anniversary Activities Update, and this again is City Manager Rich. So, if you would, please provide us with an update.
This is the fun item.
Yeah.
So, you had requested that we provide monthly updates to city council on all of our actions, so I'm not going to read to you everything that we've done in the past. I'll just highlight some of the more exciting things that have taken place since the last time that we did this update. You probably see our vehicles all driving around with seals on them for the 30th anniversary. We did have one little hiccup, and we can't tease him because our OCFA rep is not here, but we ordered magnetic decals.
He's just hiding behind Jack, by the way.
There he is. So, we ordered magnetic decals to go on the fire trucks, but to find out that they would not stick on the doors of the fire trucks. So, we're switching out, but they soon will be driving around with 30th anniversary seals on them. And then, we did have the first meeting of the committee. This is the committee that was made up of several different organizations that you had previously approved. It was a very robust attendance, and it was, Ally, our Parks and Rec Director, did a fabulous job at leading them in conversation, and I don't believe there was a single person in the room that didn't add some comments to it. So, we gathered a lot of information from them on things they would like to see, things they would like to be able to participate in, or activities that they want to do. While we had them in the room, we did take advantage of all that knowledge in the room, and we did participate in a little bit of a strategic planning exercise, because as you know, one of the wishes is, you know, what's going to happen for the next 30 years and trying, excuse me, trying to get that initial input. We've gathered it from employees, and then we were able to gather it from all the individuals that came to that first committee meeting. They had great ideas. All of them seemed to really love the idea of a carnival or a street fair, and they added a lot of additional information, such as beer and wine gardens, information booths, fundraising opportunities for their individual clubs. And then, we also have deployed a number of signage across the city. Hopefully, you are seeing it. We still have some big stuff yet to come. Unfortunately, the rain has caused a little bit of delay. We have window films that are going to be going up in the front of City Hall and also at Sea Country, but with the dampness, they haven't been able to put them up. So, we have a few pictures for you on the screen of the areas where we have indicated signs. I'm sure you're going to recognize what building that is in, Sea Country. We have at all of our fire stations flutter flags that are on visible display. And then, I believe that our Parks and Rec was the first one to put their signs up, so there's flutter flags to the interest of the construction zone right now, but we are celebrating and waving the flag of the 30th anniversary. And you might have noticed when you drove down Crown Valley that we have a banner on the side of the City Hall. And additionally, pretty soon, you're going to see the street banners that will be up along Golden Lantern and Crown Valley, and then you will also see the films get done in the window of both Sea Country and City Hall. I don't know if our Public Works Director has a better timeline for those items that you might want to add.
The window films for City Hall and Sea Country are tentatively scheduled to be installed this Saturday while City Hall is closed, depending the weather and the rain, unfortunately, and they're not able to get them to stick to the windows.
And then, we are working on the spread for the Orange County Business Journal that we've secured, and I know that they have been very busy soliciting from the local businesses who want to advertise in our Laguna Negal dedicated section. And then, we also are getting additional tchotchkes. We're going to get T-shirts with the logo on it for all full and part-time employees. And then, one of the items that we will have, which will certainly last longer than the year of 2019, it was an item that we had researched to try to find out what memorable type of a gift could we give out at the different functions, or could we have, could we give as prizes, could we give them as thank you gifts? And we settled in on it's a recyclable bag that you could use for grocery shopping, and it has a map of Laguna Negal printed on the side of it. So, it's a nice keepsake. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer.
I will say on behalf of myself that it was a great meeting. I truly appreciate all the organizations sending representatives. We had a full boat and then some. We had a lot of people come that hadn't even RSVP'd, so we were very lucky to have a very full crew. It went on for a while, and there were copious, copious notes taken. We had three people in the room, four people in the room taking notes, so it went very, very well, and I was pleased with it, and I'm sure that there were a lot of nods, and it was a good time to be in Laguna Negal. You can see how much service these people give, and it was truly a special event. So, I want to say thank you to staff and all that. What do you think will be, what's the expectation of timelines so that we can understand the calendar and when events are getting slated? Will we know that maybe in this coming month?
If you don't have on your calendar already, we were going to do another internal planning meeting and debrief on everything that we learned from the committee meeting, but we are looking at some dates in August for the street fair and the carnival. And then, in addition, we have our entire calendar of all the other events that take place in the city that will be incorporating the 30th celebration on the end of the year. I don't believe we've zeroed in to a date.
Yeah, okay, good. Any other council comments? Councilwoman Jenaway?
This is exciting, our 30th anniversary. We've got a lot to look forward to. When will we be seeing the feature in the Orange County Business Journal?
I believe our publication date is April 22nd. I'm 90% sure. I know it's in April, the 22nd is the part I'm 90% sure of.
Okay, that's close enough.
I will let you all know.
Okay, thank you.
And I would encourage the council and anybody who might be listening, if they have connections with businesses, to encourage them to advertise in that, because it's a very special rate. It's part of a big promotion that we're doing just for the city. So, that will not only be a great advertising opportunity, it'll also be a good keepsake for the city as well and for the businesses. So, with that, I'll make a motion to receive and file that report. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, it's moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway, and it passed unanimously. So, thank you very much. That concludes all of our discussion items, unbelievably, and we will move on to council comments and reports, and I will start to my left this time. Councilmember Minigar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February 26th, with Councilmember Sandy Reins, I attended the special workshop at the City Council Chambers for the Community Development Block Grant, which is a hub, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development would be allocating funding on an annual basis to different cities, over 3,000 cities in the country. And there were five service providers or community organizations that showed up, and they went over their qualifications, what they've done and what they're trying to achieve by receiving the grants from our great city. And without getting into the budgetary aspects of them, I believe that it is slated for April the 2nd to be coming back to the city council for discussions and for ratification of the list of those community service providers that have made the request to receive funding and what exactly they are going to be doing for us for that funding. And with that, then, should I move on with the council reports, since I've been out for quite some time? I want to summarize it rather than going to every event.
We appreciate that.
The first one is that, as the only representative from 34 cities in Orange County, I was invited by President SCAG to go to Sacramento two weeks ago to meet with the state legislatures with regard to what they're planning to do this fiscal year. And then, I was honored by the Orange County Engineering Council as the public service awardee from Orange County as one of the engineers. Moving on, I attended USC Soul School of Public Policy for the Public Forum with a lot of other elected officials two weeks ago. And last Friday, I attended as the principal of the day at Marion Bergerson Elementary School in our city, and then I attended the, a big meeting with the Capital Unified School District Board of Trustees and other elected officials and other principals of the day. And last but not least, I was honored to be re-elected as the chairman of the Transportation Corridor Agency of Orange County, which is comprised of 18 cities in Orange County and three Orange County supervisors for another year. They have asked me to stay as the chairman of the toll road agency because of all the political and technical issues that they are facing, which is a big honor. It brings leadership to our great city on a countywide basis. And also, on behalf of the Persian communities, I'll be at UCLA, City Hall of City of Los Angeles, City Hall of City of Beverly Hills, and on March 24th, I'll be at the city of Irvine, at the Rose Garden, that all the elected officials and Orange County Sheriff and Orange County DA would be present with myself to celebrate the Persians' New Year. With that, I conclude my reports, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilman Minigar? I was also going to ask, and with your consent, I wouldn't mind putting on a future agenda item. It doesn't have to be in the next meeting, but I would like to get an update on the TCA, OCTA, current issues that are going on. I know there's a lot, and frankly, I know you have a lot of meetings about those. I don't know anything about that other than what I'm catching in the paper, so I thought it might be helpful for the rest of the council if we could agendize that and maybe get a staff report that you could work on.
I'll be more than happy to do that, only for the public portion of it. As you may know, we have had a number of lawsuits from the People's Republic of San Clemente with regard to the potential extension of 241 toll road.
Right.
It has been the only city so far out of 34 cities in the great county of Orange that have taken a different position. Nothing has been finalized by TCA yet, nor it would be finalized for the next two years. We are going to be going through the environmental, planning, design aspects of this humongous multi-billion dollar project, and then, the board members would be voting upon that. So, on the public side of it, I'll be more than happy to cover the whole thing, and also SCAG, by the way.
That's fine, and I just want to make sure, and we don't have to get into the closed session stuff, obviously, but, and you can work with staff about the timing on that if there's a meeting coming up, that would be helpful. But I would like to see it on an agenda, just so the rest of the council can have some. I know you're very busy with it, and I'd just like to appreciate what that is.
I'll be more than happy.
Great, thank you very much. I'll turn to this side, Councilwoman Reins.
Last week, on Wednesday, I, as a new OCFA board member, I had the privilege of touring all of the operations of everything that OCFA provides for us, and we're very, very blessed in Orange County to have OCFA. It's a premier agency. It's one that all over the country looks at for direction and help. So... the country looks at for direction and help. So it was very impressive. The most important thing that I learned that night was, I know that everybody's excited that you can call 911 now from your cell phone, but when you do that, you want to make sure that you immediately give them your address. Because even though the system is phenomenal, it only pings on your phone a 30 to 50-foot radius of where you are. So by giving them your address as soon as you call 911, they can get to you quicker, and you'll, your emergency can be taken care of faster. So it was very impressive. I got to watch the whole process, and the interesting thing was that when you call 911, you know, you get sent to your place where your emergency is, and you have no idea what goes on behind the scenes. It's a three-tiered process. There's the first process where you call and they triage what your emergency is. Then they send you to the next line where you need to be, whether it's fire or police. And then from there, it goes to a triage person who, whoever is coming on the scene to take care of your emergency is still in touch with dispatch, so they can continue to support that. And I thought it was very fascinating. So we are very blessed in Orange County and in Laguna Niguel to have both OCFA and our Sheriff's Department, but please remember, give your address when you call 911. And then on a sadder note, my prayers go out to the family who lost their son today. This is a very sad day for our community as a whole, for the young man who took his life, and I just wanted to remind all young people that there is help, and the phone number for suicide prevention to get help is 800-273-8255. And there is people who care about you and love you, so please call for help. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you for mentioning that as well. Councilwoman Jenaway?
Okay, just to touch on a few of the events I've been attending, went to the Orange County Forum, had the Congressional Delegation Luncheon, and that's where we had an in-depth look at the three, three new congressmen and women from Orange County, Gilssus Narros, Katie Porter, and Harley Ruda, who is our representative. So they were posed with many questions, and we got to hear what they consider their priorities to be. And it's very important with new, a new congressional delegation that we, as council members, continue to interact with them so that they know what the focus is and what the priorities are here in Laguna Niguel. So I went to that one, and then just last, I believe it was Friday, the League of California Cities had another luncheon with Congressman Porter, and Mayor Pro Tem Davies was at that as well, and Mayor Jennings was at the first one that I mentioned. It's very important that we give our youth the tools that they need to, to prevent being victimized or feeling like they're bullied, or that they know that they can go talk to someone and how to empower themselves. So those are some of the workshops that our city has been coordinating and hosting, and myself and Mayor Pro Tem Davies have been working on that for a couple of years now. So last week was, I believe it was the first one for the elementary students, and it was a bullying prevention workshop, and give them the tools on how to use their voice, what words to use, and how to also be a backup buddy for your friends. So those are very important tools that we can give our children. Let's see. Oh, so we have talked for the last year, homelessness has been a focus of all of Orange County. And in Laguna Niguel, we have always done an excellent job of working towards preventing homelessness, and some of the, is with the organization, partnering with the organizations that we give some of the Community Development Block Grants to, South County Outreach and Family Assistance Ministries. So on the 22nd was the ribbon cutting hosted by the Chamber of Commerce for Family Assistance Ministries for their satellite location at Laguna Niguel Presbyterian Church. So FAM has been working for about 20 years on preventing homelessness, on providing food where it's needed, providing utility assistance or rental assistance, because it's so important that if someone is on the brink of homelessness, to keep them in their home and then work towards resolving that situation and helping them. So, and I really commend both FAM for what they do, and also Laguna Niguel Presbyterian Church for opening a satellite location there so that the necessities and services can be provided much closer to where those who need it can obtain it. So congratulations to both organizations, and thank you so much for what you do in our community. This Friday will be the, the Orange County Senior Citizens Advisory Council Monthly Meeting. It rotates around the county every month throughout the year. It'll be in Laguna Niguel this Friday, and the speaker will be the Director of Demographic Research at Cal State Fullerton, and the topic will be senior demographics. So if anyone is providing services to seniors, or your business works with seniors, or is dependent on any of the age groups demographically, this is the meeting that you want to attend. The public is welcome to attend. It starts at 9:30 at Sea Country Senior Center. And then next Tuesday, our middle school students are gonna learn about fossils in Laguna Niguel at the Junior Civic Workshop. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank the Chief and Shannon Daniels for an incredible job with the bullying prevention class. We've been, as Councilmember Jenaway said, we've been really focusing on our youth, and last week, we, for the first time, we did the second through fourth graders, and previous, we had fifth through eighth graders. And it's really quite impressive to see these kids come out and teaching them the skills so that they can have the confidence to stand up, how to protect themselves, but also to, you know, if they see bullying going on, to run to a trusted adult and let them know. And after both classes we had, there was one student for both of them, came up to our police services and, you know, talked about how they're being bullied, and we were able to be able to give them information. And to me, I mean, if we can help one child, it makes such a big difference. So I want to thank your staff for doing such a great job, and same with Parks and Rec for helping us out at the senior committee. It's, it's really great to see, and we're gonna continue doing things like that. Also had the opportunity to be principal for the day at Laguna Niguel Elementary. Principal Ewing, fantastic. That is such a great school. We have incredible teachers in our city. We're so blessed for that, and it was a lot of fun. And that school is organized to the T, but it was great. I also was appointed to chair for OCTA Legislation Committee, so I'm also now in the executive committee with that, so I was happy to have that opportunity. And then the mayor and I did meet with the superintendent last week to go over different things that we can collaborate on, and a lot of them being safety issues. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Just want to echo something that Councilwoman Reins brought up. My heart has been sort of torn today, and it's been in thinking with our friends in Elisa Viejo, and I reached out to Mayor Ross Chun to let him know that we were thinking about him to ask if there was anything that we could do. And I couldn't agree more that life is terribly precious, and it's never more mindful than at times like that. So really, it broke my heart, and I know that the folks in Elisa Viejo are really struggling with that. And to the extent that the city can be of any resource whatsoever, we're willing to do that. So I say thank you. I was reminded of that because I was the principal of the day at Niguel Hills Middle School this past Friday as well, and had a wonderful, a truly wonderful experience. The principal and the staff and the students there were, were so accommodating and nice, and I can see why they, I said all day, I can see why you all go into this line of work. It was very, very special. I had a great time and enjoyed very much CUSD hosting the, the after, the, after we were principals for a while, we got to go, and we had lunch, and had a meeting, and heard from the others. And it's a very good experience, and just wanted to say thank you. A couple of things coming up as part of our 30th celebration, and as part of my mayor duties, I've asked to put a coffee with the mayor. That's scheduled for March 27th. It'll be at the Sea Country Center. Invite everybody. It's, there's really no agenda. If you want to talk, come out and talk, and we'll, we'll pick whatever you want to talk about and go with that for a while. So I think we're going with the, with the branding of Straight Talk Round Donuts. So I think I've got a spring for some donuts that morning, maybe, so. And hopefully the talk will be nice and straight, too. And then finally, for the, for the 30th anniversary, wanted to do some outreach to our local business community. So we're going to have a mayor's walk, where I'll, will be at the Liso Creek Village, which is the Whole Food Center, be walking, talking to all of those businesses, knocking on doors, and invite the community to come go with us. We've got our Community Development Director, Orduña, going with me, as well as the several folks from the Chamber of Commerce, so it should be a nice crowd. So we're just trying to bring attention to that, and I think that's a fantastic deal. I'd very much like to do that with the other centers in town, and I'm sure we'll be doing that throughout the year. So if you would, put that on your calendar for March 12th and invite everybody to come. So with that, I will stop for a moment and turn it over to Chief McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the nice comments. I'll pass that on to Crime Prevention Specialist Shannon Daniels. She truly does care about that program and does a great job with it. Like you were saying earlier, and you've all alluded to, if it helps one kid get through some of these things, then, then we've been successful. By way of recap, we had our shred event two Saturdays ago. We had a 30% increase in vehicle traffic, so it was very well received. We shredded over 59,000 pounds of important documents, so hopefully prevented a great deal of ID theft and fraud. Thank you, Mayor, for supporting us and coming out, and I'm sure you saw the extensive operation that it is. And in that, I'd like to thank Sergeant Songer and the rest of our staff for all the work on that day, and all the volunteers that helped out. Half of that is run by volunteers, both our explorers and our PAC members, so I'd just like to thank them. And that's all I have.
Yeah, that was a great machine. Really appreciate you all doing that. Finance Director Erlinson. Great, thank you for your report earlier tonight. City Attorney Ellis. Great, thank you. And from the back of the room in the chief sheets, Chief Contreras, anything? Two thumbs up's a good sign. So Community Development, Orduña?
Just one quick announcement. I'd like to, happy to announce that Marshals will be opening, opening a new location in the city at 27080 Alicia Parkway within the Laguna Niguel Marketplace. They will be holding a grand opening on this Thursday, March 7th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So come on out and support the newest member of our business community.
Great. Welcome to town, too, Marshals. Thanks so much for being there. City Clerk Gomez?
No, I'm too excited from the Marshall's announcement.
You need a moment. It's, it's okay. Parks and Rec Director, Aguilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Also excited about Marshals. Thank you. Great news. The MLB Pitch Hit and Run Baseball and Softball Skills Competition is coming up on Sunday, March 17th, at Chaprosa Park. It's a free event for ages seven to 14 years old, and top scorers have the possibility of advancing to regional and national competitions. And also, the Mission Viejo and Laguna Niguel Animal Services will be hosting an informative community workshop on living with coyotes in Laguna Niguel on March 14th from 7:00 to 8:00 here at City Hall. There's more information on our city website for any of these events. Thank you.
Is that true? That's hosted by the Acme Corporation?
Yes, absolutely.
Deputy City Manager Bell. I couldn't resist. Director Scott?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to mention that in light of all of the rain events that we've had, the series of rain events, we get a couple days off, things dry out a little bit, and we get hit pretty hard again. We've had some down trees around the city. We've also had a number of potholes show up in our city streets, and after each major event, we are sending out the Public Works Maintenance crews to do an inspection. We try to catch everything that we can, but if anybody sees anything out there, please call the Public Works Department. Our direct line into Public Works is 949-362-4337. We also have an online system where residents can submit something that they see, and we'll get out and respond as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Yeah, we lost a big one in the park. I saw that. Came by. That was a big tree.
Yeah, we've had a couple down so far this season, and with more rain coming, it might happen again.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that. We did one agenda item on here, and I, I want to make sure that we got it covered. It was the Grants Ad Hoc Committee, and I know that Councilmember Minaghar, you mentioned that, but I don't know if you had anything else to add, or Councilwoman Reins? I didn't want to skip past an agenda item. If there's anything else you wanted to report for the ad hoc committee. Okay, good. With that, City Manager Rich?
Just a couple of items. On Friday, I went to Paris, Paris, California, to visit an anaerobic digester facility. It was absolutely amazing. So our trash provider, CRNR, opened up the first one of these in the entire United States. It's on a 52-acre site, and they take yard waste and food waste, and they run it through digesters with microbes, and they produce gas out of it. The gas is then used to power their fleet, and then they also joined a pipeline to the Southern California pipes, and they pipe their excess gas into the gas pipeline. And the only other waste that comes out of it is a fertilizer component, so it is one of the only methods for yard waste and for food that results in zero waste, so it's 100% diversion. So it was really an exciting tour. It was about a four to five-hour bus ride. I will tell you, it did not smell at all out there. And CRNR would like to extend invites to any of you that are interested as well in doing that tour. If you let me know, I can get that set up for you. And then just the last item, I did receive today an invitation from Judge Carter's courtroom. There has been some additional cities that have been named in a lawsuit, so he's having a conference on April 2nd, and he extended an invite to the city manager and the mayor of all of the 34 cities in Orange County. So that's it.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, unless there's anything else, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:49.